Our first item is approval of the June 14th regular commission meeting minutes, and the June 21st special commission meeting minutes, and the June 28th regular commission meeting minutes.
Madam Mayor, two small typos have been corrected, and I make a motion that we approve the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th regular commission meetings.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the commission meeting minutes for June 21st, June 28th, and June 14th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Diliterate and act on St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's, annual Fiesta, and street closure. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, this is an event that has been held in Raton and St. Joseph's for a number of years. It's really grown into, you know, a signature event for Raton. Our emergency services have reviewed the proposal, and our street departments have reviewed it. I think it's one that we're very familiar with, we feel comfortable with. Our recommendation is to approve the street closure. It's an important event for Raton, and I think we're prepared for it.
I'll move that we approve the street closure for the
I'll second.
St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's, annual Fiesta.
One question.
Yes.
Is this something new that, because on the ones before, I haven't seen that they had the signatures of everybody within 100 feet?
That's always been there.
That's always been there?
Okay.
Thank you.
No, I think that's related to the nature of the event, that it's basically held in a residential area, and you know, concern that residents, you know, may be impacted by that, so they're expressing that they are in favor of the event.
We'd have a motion and a second to approve the St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's, annual Fiesta, and street closure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Diliterate and act on an agreement between the city of Raton and the village of Springer for dispatch services. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, this is a routine agreement that we've, up for renewal, we've had this agreement in town, in place with the town of Springer for a number of years. There are really not changes to the, to the agreement from previous years. It's worked pretty well. We do provide dispatch services to the town of Springer, and we feel that the amount listed, three thousand and four dollars per year, is fair payment for the services that we provide through our dispatch center.
Do we, so this is not, we didn't raise the price at all?
Chief, if I don't know, if you can address the dispatch agreement, or, I believe that it's the same amount.
I believe it is the same price.
It is the same.
It's been the same amount ever since I've been a commissioner.
Long time ago, remember, yeah.
Yeah, it has been.
I would say as true commissioner, and, or mayor and commission, we are reviewing these dispatch agreements. We have an effort going now to try to determine the cost of us providing dispatch versus the, the fair amount to, to municipalities, or the county, or other entities that we dispatch to. And we do anticipate some revisions to some of these agreements that will be coming to you during the fiscal year. This is an agreement, I think, based on the number of calls that we have, that we deem really does not justify to increase. Now, generally, costs of providing these services, they do only increase. Our costs are personnel-related, and of course, those go up every year.
Every year.
But the equipment, a lot of the other things that go with dispatch, of course, are, we get help with through the state. So it's really just personnel costs. But we are doing a comprehensive review of costs. We felt like this one was not necessary to increase it based on the number of calls, but we will look at each and every contract before it comes to you, and there will be revisions to those contracts as they come to the commission.
Thank you for that. Yeah, my only concern is, we haven't raised the price, but the people that work in dispatch have gotten a pay increase every year I've been a commissioner also.
Right.
So I would just like to see the cost offset.
Right. And, and mayor, based on that, I think that we would probably try to bring additional data to the commission on, you know, what those costs are versus the service that we provide. And, and we really look at the number of calls, and we're trying to compare it to other public entities that provide dispatch services, and what they charge basically on a per-call basis. So we'll try to put together a report for the commission and bring it to you, a bit of evaluation, we're undergoing that at this time.
And thank you for doing that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Raton and the village of Springer for dispatch services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the city of Raton and the village of Springer for dispatch services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Diliterate and act on resolution 2016-35, acceptance of the New Mexico DOT SP-4-17958 co-op agreement and pledge of matching funds. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, we were informed that we were successful in receiving cooperative agreement funding from the New Mexico Department of Transportation in the recent cycle. You'll remember that we also applied for municipal arterial program funding, and from the information that we have right now, we were not successful in receiving MAP funds. So if you remember, we had discussed MAP improvements to Hospital Drive. This is two years in a row that we had talked about applying for municipal arterial program funds, and applying those to Hospital Drive, and it looks like both years we have not been funded on that. So that's, of course, a necessary project, something that's a high priority for street improvements, and, you know, we don't have an answer on Hospital Drive here today. But we did receive a total of $49,093 through this, is this for the city, is that the correct amount? I see Raton Public Schools in this one, so.
Yeah, no, that's the correct amount.
Okay. $49,000 was awarded to the city of Raton. We would be responsible for 25 percent of that, or $12,273. That would come from our gas tax, and then DOT would supply $36,820. My recommendation to the commission is that we designate this grant for the area of South First Street where the Great Blocks project is proposed. And we've had a schematic of that proposal on the table for you there. So we have some street improvements in the Rio Grande intersection and the Cook intersection, and we would primarily focus on that. And if you'll remember, we did submit an application to New Mexico Main Street for their capital outlay program. We applied for $300,000, and we obligated a $90,000 match, or about 30 percent match. And I would recommend to the commission that we put this grant toward that $90,000 match for that project. Of course, there's probably not a street in town that doesn't need street improvements, and so that's just a recommendation to the commission. There's probably no wrong answer, but I think at this time, Jason, we do need to designate where we intend to apply the funds, is that correct?
Yes.
The official resolution. So we're doing two things. We're designating where we would apply the funds, and also that we would meet our $12,000 match. Those are two things that you would, you would determine with the resolution. So there's no pressure to pass the resolution. If you want to talk about potential projects, we can certainly do that. We can certainly come back and do that as well, but that's something I would like to throw out for your consideration.
Okay, in this contract, a resolution, where it says Raton Public Schools, that should be city of Raton?
City of Raton, yes.
And you said the match would come from gasoline tax?
Correct. And I meant to get a current balance on gasoline tax today, I didn't get that, but we're sitting at about $250,000 in that, in that.
Right. If, if we were to pass a resolution designating the term nigh this evening, and for some reason we weren't successful in getting the grant, that this would be pledged towards the match-up, we would just bring forth a subsequent resolution, changing the term nigh, and we would just move the money there.
Fellow commissioners, personally, I think that the south, applying it to the South First Street improvements would be prudent at this time, especially with the multimodal nearing completion.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be my recommendation.
I'll move that we approve resolution number 2016-35, and accept the DOT, NMDOT cooperative agreement and pledge matching funds.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2016-35, acceptance of the New Mexico DOT SP-4-17958 cooperative agreement and pledge of matching funds, and to designate the project to be the Great Blocks grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, I would further just throw in that myself, Jason Phillips, and Raton Main Street are working on an application for additional funds for the project to New Mexico fund it, and that is a variety of, of entities that review projects and determine different ways to fund those. We will submit our application by Thursday, and we'll have a meeting in the morning to finalize that and submit that, and then we'll make a presentation the following week to the various entities that New Mexico funded, and try to get additional funding through that route.
Okay, thank you. Just for my own clarification, the, when we finish Tiger Drive, that's a MAP project?
Mayor and Commission, the funds that we have currently on Tiger Drive come from the 2016 legislative capital outlay. The amount there was $150,000. With our bids on that, and professional services, total cost was around $200,000, which our share then would come again from gasoline tax. So I was gonna report under the manager's report, but I would tell you that Tiger Drive is scheduled to commence next week, and we would anticipate the construction time to be about three weeks, and sneak in there, in there under the wire for school starting. And that is capital outlay from the 16, uh, 15 legislature, excuse me.
15, 2016. Okay, and then, it's a cooperative grant, I believe, for the, the avenues that we're doing between First and Second? What are we doing, three, three avenues?
Correct. We've requested bids, and we have consideration of those bids on the agenda for tonight, and the proposal there is that we resurface three blocks in the downtown area. We'll provide some more information there, but that would be funded through our cooperative agreement
Get funds.
Grant that we have from last year.
Right, and so we don't have any more MAP?
That's correct.
Okay.
No MAP currently.
Okay, all right. Diliterate and act on resolution 2016-36, approval of fixed asset changes.
Mayor and Commission, we worked on this throughout today, but there's just some additional data that the city treasurer needed before she could finalize the fixed asset changes for the commission, so we would ask that we would delay action on this till the next meeting. We'll get the additional information together and bring it back to you at the next meeting. So we would ask that we postpone.
Is that both for E and F?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because I would like to see a list.
I'd make a motion then that we postpone items E and F till next mission, uh, next meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a, we have a motion and a second to postpone item E and F until the next regular city commission meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Before we go any further, I would need a motion to move item M up to, between J and K.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rearrange our agenda to have the city manager's report come before the closed executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Diliterate and act on voting delegate to attend the annual New Mexico Municipal League meeting.
Mayor and Commission, as I understand, we need to appoint voting delegates from the commission. I believe the meeting is in Hobbs, and so that's a long trip, but to represent the city of Raton and vote on issues that come in front of the municipal league. And of course, those resolutions and policies of the New Mexico Municipal League then turn into policy that's presented at the legislative session, as the municipal league's representative of the 103 municipalities, so some importance to that, but I believe we would look for two designates here that would attend and vote.
We need a, we need a delegate and an, and
An alternate.
Alternate.
I'd like to nominate Lindy and Neil. They've got the most experience in that type of stuff, so I nominate.
Nice out. It happens, though, that I am going out and getting my molly certification.
Congratulations.
So I will be going.
You'll be there.
You're working on it.
Yeah, I guess, I thought that was in Santa Fe.
That's too close.
That's the classes.
Oh, okay.
Too close. Hobbs.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah.
It's right before Labor Day.
Just before Labor Day.
It starts the 30th, I believe, and goes to the First and Second.
All right.
29th, actually.
I will accept your nomination.
Okay. Who's going to be the delegate, who's going to be the alternate?
I, I believe our mayor pro tem should be the delegate, and I'll be the alternate.
All right. You make that formal.
I move that the mayor pro tem, Neil, so gotta be delegate, and I will happily serve as alternate.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Complete, Commissioner, checks.
This turn is coming.
Yeah, I just got back from a long trip.
You're gonna, you're gonna drive us down there, though, right? Don't be the driver?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Diliterate and act on bid award for Downtown Avenue resurfacing project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, this is the project that is funded by cooperative agreement 416-907, and we had aggregate funding in about $64,624. And you can see our share is $16,000 and some change. We got one bid from WM Sarrazio, company of Raton, which is typical on a project of this scale, that is, primarily consists of hot-mix asphalt. The project primarily consists of hot-mix resurfacing of three blocks in the downtown area. These are avenues between First Street and Second Street, and there are specifically Savage Avenue, which is across the street here, is in really poor condition, Cook Avenue and Apache Avenue. On Cook Avenue, there was water line replacement that took place last year, and we do have some cost-sharing arrangement with Raton Water Works to try to restore the condition of the pavement there. So you can see the total bid amount, I have the last, somewhere $80,000 is change, that includes varsity tax, so you can see the difference between the co-op funding and the bid that we have. But we have one bid and one bidder, I think this is a fair price, and we recommend approval of this. And as we have reported, work is scheduled to start next week on Tiger Drive, and the first step is cold milling of the existing asphalt. There's also cold milling on the edges of these avenues, so while the equipment is mobilized to Raton for that process, these avenues would go ahead, and the milling would take place on those. So work would start next week on this, if it's awarded by the commission tonight, and then the repaving would be complete in a couple of weeks thereafter. There is a little concrete work to be performed on this, specifically on Savage Avenue, and if you've been on Savage Avenue, you can see that there's a kind of a mixture of curb and gutter there, and so we try to clean that up in that area.
I'll make a motion to award, I'll make a motion to award a bid for the Downtown Avenue resurfacing project.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to give the bid award for the Downtown Avenue resurfacing project to William Sarrazio. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Diliterate and act on solid waste facility fund grant agreement, project number 17 SWF-04. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, since he got all dressed up and pinned our meeting, I'd like to call on Jason Phillips to walk us through this. I'm a few moments behind.
Mayor and Commissioner, we've talked about this project in the past. We had submitted an application for funding to construct one additional groundwater monitoring well. This well is a requirement of the New Mexico Environment Department. It will actually replace an existing well. We had requested funding in excess of $18,000. They have awarded us funding in the amount of $16,817, and we would have required cash, cash match of $8,183, which we would have to expend our full amount before we get to the whole $25,000 amount. The costs right now are, are not fixed. We have an estimated cost from Gordon for some of the design work, and the actual drilling and installation of the well can vary, though. Try to get three written quotes for that, and proceed ahead. It would not surprise me if the net cost wasn't in excess of the $25,000, but it's a cost that we were gonna bear 100 percent of without the grant application, so I would recommend that we go ahead and sign the grant, and get at least the $16,000 of support.
I'll make a motion to approve the solid waste facility fund grant agreement, project 17 SWF-04.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the solid waste facility grant agreement, project number 17 SWF-04. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a public hearing with the 2018, 2022 ICIP public hearing. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, we would submit our infrastructure capital improvement plan to the state of Mexico, I believe it's in September, I'm not sure of the date, but we have a little time to work on that, and as a way of starting that process, I have included the plan that we, we submitted last year, and we're under currently, even though it says fiscal year 17 to 21, this is, was prepared last year. So you can see the way that we've listed these priorities. The priorities that are shown on this sheet are very important, especially when you're talking about legislative capital outlay. They really review this, and they would like to see that your capital outlay corresponds to items that you list as a high priority, really in the top five. So that's one of the important things here, and something to think about. Other grant opportunities, we'll also review this, or make sure that we're current on this, and, and ensure that those are listed as a high priority. And what we would like to see at this time is the public, in some format, either show up here, or write us a letter, or send us an email, however it works, telling us what their priorities are, what the public would like to see as a priority. We have passed that along to our staff and department heads to, to give us their feedback on priorities, and of course, they are, in the end, the priorities of the city commission, so from your knowledge of town and your input from citizens, you would make the judgment as to what those priorities are. So you can see that basically going through the top five, street improvements and street reconstruction is listed as number one. We honestly, we need a lot of help on street improvements. We don't have a lot of resources, as we've talked, talked about, that are generated from the gasoline tax, so we look at all avenues. And certainly, the last couple of years, we, we've got some funding through the legislature, and hopefully that would improve and go up, but it's hard to see a street improvements not being a high priority for Raton, and that's some of the feedback that I get pretty frequently. You see Lake Maloya dam safety improvements is on the list. Raton Water Works has completed a preliminary engineering report that identify many, many millions of dollars could be spent on Lake Maloya to meet dam safety regulations. We're really at the beginning of that process. That will be on our list for the long term. And Mr. Campbell is arranging meetings with state engineer office as far as seeing what funding or resources may be available through their office, particularly at legislative time. State engineer and the Dam Safety Bureau work with legislators to try to arrange funding for projects like Lake Maloya, so it would have some importance that this project is listed in our top five, one of our priorities, and indications are that there could be funding that shows up for Lake Maloya improvement project. And we could talk about the specifics of that, but generally, it's rehabilitation or replacement of outlet piping, and spillway capacity are the two big concerns with Lake Maloya Dam. We have Raton Police Department, replacement of patrol cars. We did replace a couple last year. Remember, we bought some used cars from the state of Kansas. We don't really have an effective way of funding additional patrol car replacement, but some of the old Ford Explorers that you see out there are really getting expensive to keep on the street and maintain, and so we need to have a, a regular replacement program for those. We really need to look at, at a lot of vehicles in the city, but it's just a particular importance that we keep these police vehicles running, so they're listed in there. The Main Street Great Blocks, I don't know that that's, you know, really under this legislative path, that it would be important that we maintain a high spot for the Great Blocks. I think it is a priority for me, certainly for Raton Main Street, but that's one that we could look at sliding up and down. I don't know that it, it really has to maintain a high position there. And then transport station and the recycle center, and you remember that we were working on a grant agreement with the New Mexico Environment Department for an additional quarter million dollars of funding on that project. Ultimately, you see an estimated cost of 1.2 million. The challenge that we have right now is to build that facility for $750,000. So where we would compromise is probably on the recycle portion of the building if we compromise, and try to maintain recycle operations at Artmax. We would like the 1.2 million, but we're going forward with a $750,000 project in this year, and that's really the direction of the cabinet secretary of ED is, with this quarter million dollar funding, we would like to see this constructed in '16, so that's our goal. So we may phase that, and that could have a, a place in our highest priorities here as well, but what is really becoming important is the public works equipment, and we are getting to the end of the life of a lot of our public works equipment. We've got problems with loaders that we use typically every day in public works. We need replacement of one or two dump trucks in that department, and in order to be more effective with, with our pothole management, our street maintenance, we really look at, need to look at equipment that's specific to pothole patching. So that is becoming a critical need for us, and I think it has to be high on the list. I don't know that we don't build the legislature and ask for funding for police cars and for equipment. I, I don't know how they react to that request, but it's certainly becoming a critical need for us. You can see on down the list, we have, you know, pages of these things, and we would ask input of the public and, and the thoughts of the commission, wishes of the commission.
Can a copy of this be picked up by the general public at the city offices?
We can provide a copy We can provide a copy of this. If we don't have it on the website now, we will put it on the website.
It'll be on the website. Okay, great. And will we have, we will have another public hearing?
We will have, we will plan at least two more.
Two more?
We want to have an effective, you know, time for the public to give us their feedback on.
Yes, and we're very interested in getting input from the public. So look on the website or come into the city office and pick up a copy and let us know what you think are the most important capital improvement projects. We'd like to hear from you.
Scott, the equipment we have is landfill. Is it owned? How old is it?
Which one's that?
Like the loaders.
Yeah. We've been talking about it a lot, and I know Jason has been involved now. Where we run right now are two cat loaders. They're actually integrated tool carriers. They're an IT series. And do you remember the dates that we bought those pieces? I know Ernie has one at the landfill that's
No, not a more.
Not operational. And what was the year on that? Do you remember?
Wait, what did you? I want to say it was in '04.
An '04?
I think it had $4,000 on it while we bought it.
Yeah, how many hours does it have now?
They're in excess of $13,000.
And in talking to equipment dealers, you know, they say that's just at the end of its life. There's, you know, it's not
Actually, at $10,000, that's the end of its life.
Yeah, it's not worth the expense of trying to keep that operational. And we have a newer one that we use in the streets, and it's having its problems. It's not quite at that level of hours. I don't know, Jason, do you remember the hours on that?
It's pretty close to.
$10,000 plus. And what we hear from other people is somewhere around the $12,000 hour mark. Not necessarily a replacement, but you have a significant overhaul somewhere. These tools are now $140,000 piece of equipment. Both of these machines could use $35,000 to $40,000 in overall.
We've had an issue with a dump truck we talked about yesterday. You know, it could use probably about $10,000 of work on it right now. And that's our choice is we could look at replacement of some of these vehicles and some of the equipment, or we could put large dollars into trying to keep them operational. And I have Chief Garcia here. Chief, I don't know if you could kind of tell us the condition of the police fleet, but I know that we keep putting transmissions in police vehicles.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commission, we have, we've replaced two transmissions in the 2010 Explorers. There are two others that are going out. They're slipping, they're giving way. So we've just been sitting tight because the budget has been tight, and we've used up all of our maintenance budget. So with this new budget in place, we'll be able to replace the two others that are going, keep them on the roadways, but there's always something coming up new with them. They're pushing seven years old down. It's taking its toll, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you, Mr. Berry. On the second page and the number 15 there, there's a pinned in 750?
On the page? Uh huh.
Oh, it's written in.
It's handwritten in?
Oh, okay.
And, but does that go to city? Is that city building improvements or industrial park?
The thought there, Commissioner, is that the city would develop an industrial park area and construct a spec building that would be available because when the opportunity comes for an industrial relocation or something's going on, that usually happens pretty quick. So most communities will have a spec building available, and you can't really customize it in that case. But a lot of times, when you get that contact, they want to come right now. And as an example of that really was back when the methane field here in Raton Basin really blossomed. You know, we had some oil field services companies that came. They said, we need to set up and be in production right now. I don't think Raton was very well suited. Some of them did locate in Raton, but because the facilities were in place, some of those went to Trinidad, and I think we missed an opportunity there. So I think following this item was placed on the ICIP, and the thought was that we have a designated industrial park close to the municipal boundaries, and we have a spec building available. And, you know, we do have something of an industrial park at the airport, but our thought is that's really airport-related. So we're looking at something that could be energy-related or, you know, other industries that we're looking at. But I think it's because we, you know, lost some opportunities back in those days with the coal bed nothing.
Thank you.
So they're not interested in a tent with a cement floor?
We offered that, but we haven't had any takers on that yet.
One thing to consider, Mayor Commission, is that even though CDPT projects can't be predetermined if their neighborhood is that any of your constituents have expressed a desire for a CDPT project. We had hearings last year in the Buena Vista and Boundary Neighborhood off of Highway 72 and Sugarree. You give points in your CDB application for it being on the ICIP, but yet you can't predetermine any project. So if there's a neighborhood in particular that you think streets or drainage may be an eligible CDPT project, it's important that it shows up somewhere on the ICIP, not necessarily in the top five, but that way, in case during a public hearing process, those projects represented by those neighborhood organizations is already past that time when that application process goes.
Good information. Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments from the public on the ICIP? Okay, if not, can we have the city manager's report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I'll kind of go through some projects that we're looking at, really in construction season currently, and I'll give you a summary of that. On the multimodal project, recent work that we've been, the contractor has been completing, consists of concrete work primarily. Has placed most of the sidewalks on the project. There is a slab for the gazebo, which is included in this phase, although the structure of the gazebo is in a future phase. That's not funded in the current phase. The gazebo slab is being placed. Mower strips, curb and gutter, those are primarily in place. I would anticipate that the concrete work would be completed this week and possibly a couple of days next week. What we anticipate in the next couple of weeks is stucco will be applied at the two bus shelters that you see there, and also the completion of roofing will take place at the bus shelters. Actually, the scratch code on the bus shelter should start tomorrow. They were installing some lathe today, but scheduled to start tomorrow. A subcontractor has been installing the irrigation system. That will continue for the next 10 days to two weeks. We anticipate paving of the parking area by the end of next week. Tomorrow, I think the fencing contractor is scheduled to start construction of the fence, and then we'll have landscaping. So we anticipate completion of the project in about three weeks. So it's going to start shaping up. As we talked about, Tiger Drive is scheduled to start next week with milling and be completed in three weeks. As we talked about, the Downtown Avenue, essentially on the same schedule, should be completed during the month of August. As far as the landfill closure, soil layers that we awarded recently, that contractor has moved their equipment to the site and plans on starting work tomorrow. There is work ongoing in the senior center, the library and conference area. And I think they were waiting on some cabinets and some materials there, but that work is underway. In regard to the airport fuel tank that we talked about some time back, we've been working on an agreement with D and H United Fueling Systems there. That process has been slowed down by the fact that their representative wound up in the hospital for three weeks. Pretty serious thing going on there. Talked to him yesterday. He's back on the job. State Aviation took a little vacation, too, so they've been out of pocket. We're all back at work, and that agreement should be completed within about a week, and the fuel tank will be ordered. Raton Water Works did take bids on their Lake Dorothy spillway project. They awarded that to contractor Hasi Construction, and I believe that work is scheduled to start in the fall time. And if you've been to Lake Dorothy, there's concrete there that was placed in the 1930s, and it's coming apart. And we're really under an order from the state of Colorado, their dam safety people, to correct that. So that work will take place. Also, there is an issue at Lake Malloy Spillway that Mr. Campbell and I have been keeping our eye on. There's some maintenance work at the crest of the spillway, and that same contractor has a state contract, a state procurement agreement. Will do some sealing of that spillway for us while he's up there. Also, tomorrow, Raton Water Works will open bids on their pre-sedimentation project. That's a building and a facility located at Cimarron, at the Cimarron River that we use to convert water from that system. The architect is working on the design, the Shooter Digital Film Project. Of course, that project requires a lot of coordination with state Historic Preservation Office. So Dave Little, we approved his agreement recently, has been working with them. They've responded with what they want to see in the project, and he's putting together a design on that project. That's it for projects. I would like to acknowledge the efforts of our crews recently. Public Works had really an exceptional effort on the Fourth of July to get the town mowed, to get things looking pretty good in town. I think they did a good job. Raton Public Schools really helped the city of Raton with mowing in preparation of Fourth of July, the balloon rally. So thanks to Raton Public Schools for helping us. We were mower challenged in that process, and they didn't provide a mower and a person operating that, so I want to say thanks to them. Little League tournaments were really very successful in Raton. A lot of people in Raton for an extended period of time. Our city clerk, Tricia Garcia, in between getting married was, you know, put a lot of time into that. Also, Mr. Phillips here put a lot of time. So we had city personnel on their own time, really helping to make those things successful. Sanitation Department has been working on deploying the bear-proof dumpsters around town, and the result has been pretty interesting. The bears have been very active in Raton. They're looking for food. And we see a lot of activity where they attempt to get in these bear-proof dumpsters, and they roll them over. And that's not easy to do. These are, these dumpsters are tough to, it's difficult for two men to roll them back over. But as far as I know, they have not opened when the bears rolled them around and tried to get into them, and then they moved on. And what the result has been is we pushed bears into other areas of town in search of food. So they're showing up all over the place. We have a lot of activity. We have a lot of bear trash strung around. We get out there in the mornings and try to pick that up. And we still have a number of dumpsters to deploy, and it takes some time to get them out there. So we'll continue that process. We don't have enough to replace all of the dumpsters in town, so we'll get out there what we have. We'll work on the older model of the bear-resistant containers, try to get those out. But the bears are looking, and we are moving them around to areas of town that we haven't seen bears for a couple of years. So we would ask residents to use common sense in regard to how they dispose of their trash, really try to work with us. And definitely, these bear containers do not work if residents don't close the lids. And so closing the lids is extremely important, or they're just not going to work. But we, the city has put a bear-proof container out there in many of these areas, and that means there's not going to be a bear crew going along and picking up trash in the future. So residents will really have to learn how to use these so the bear doesn't string trash, because there's not going to be a city crew picking this up. Fire, we talked about fire. They had a crew on the Dog Head Fire for about 10 days. They responded to several wildfires in the area. We've had crews out there, and of course, the fire did an exceptional job on July 4th with the fireworks. So another great show there. Thanks, Chief, for all the efforts on that. The administration here has been working hard on the end of fiscal year and the beginning of the new fiscal year. Of course, there are a lot of tasks that go into that. We talked about the fixed assets as one, but it's been a very busy time in the office there. So I think that they've done pretty well, and certainly a lot of efforts there. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item of business is closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 10-15-1H7. Litigation, landfill lawsuit, Mark Van Busker and Lori Van Busker versus the city of Raton, case number D809CV201300245.
Make a motion to move to executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to move into closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 10-15-1H7.
Commissioner Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Docmo?
Present.
Mayor Protemus about that?
Yes.
Mayor Manz?
Yes. We're now